Sure.
All right, well, good afternoon, or I should say, good morning, everyone. It's not afternoon yet, but I'll call this meeting to order for April 9th, 2020 County Council. I guess we're starting about, I guess it's a little after 10 o'clock. We had a few technical difficulties there, but we got those worked out from our great staff and we're moving forward. At this time, well, I'm going to suggest again, if you have a cellphone, to please put it on mute. And when you're not speaking to the Zoom portion of this meeting, then to put yourself on mute also, so we don't get the background noise. And at this time, Madam Clerk, will you do the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I have all of the councilors in attendance. Counselor Gamble sends his regrets. Counselor Woodbury will be late arriving, and Counselor Burley will be joining us shortly. Everyone else is in attendance.
Okay, thank you for that, Madam Clerk. And just for everybody to know, what I will do as we move forward this, I have a list of movers and secunders, and I will ask anybody opposed to the motion. If I hear no opposition to it, I will say then or declare it's carried. Okay? And if you do wish to oppose, I will give a little bit of a break there, just so if I can't see you, the clerk can watch the chat or whatever, or, and we'll take our time going through this, so everybody has an opportunity to have input. Okay? Seeing that, is there any declaration of junior interest to the agenda that's on today? All right, I don't hear anything. Now, Madam Clerk, is there any indication there?
There is not, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. If one does arise, you can declare at that time. Moving forward, the first set of businesses, item A is the County Council and Committee Minutes of the Hall, and I have that moved by Counselor Kibbenee and Counselor Millen. Is there any discussion on those settlements? Okay, anything there, Madam Clerk?
Nothing there, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, any opposed? Okay, seeing none, that is carried. Item B is the second set of minutes of the closed session of March 12th, and I have that moved by Counselor Hicks. Well, it's second by Counselor Woodbury, but he is not in the meeting at this time. So can I have an indication from somebody else who wishes to second that?
Counselor Potter will second it.
Counselor Potter, okay, thank you. Okay, that is on the floor. Are there any items discussed on that set of minutes? Okay, I don't hear anything. Any opposed to that motion? Okay, hearing none, that is carried. Okay, item C, these are the minutes from the Committee of Management of March 10th, and I have that moved by Counselor Mackey, and second by Counselor Kibbenee. And the motion's on the floor. Are there any items to be discussed in that set of minutes? Any errors or missions? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question is with respect to page three of those minutes, page 17 of our package. It was mentioned that, I'm going to read here. Yes, that noted that the BSTU was to be at Lee Manor, but this was pulled in 2019 due to information that identified an impact on service delivery and county finances. First, I'm really happy to see that we are making an application for Gray Gables, but I wonder if you could give more information about what I read on page 17 with respect to the move from...
Lee Manor?
Lee Manor, thank you.
Okay, Madam CEO, do you wish to speak to this?
I will speak to this, and if I've missed something, then Jennifer can jump in. Council will be aware that we've been working on an application for a behavioral support transition unit for several years now, and it's been, you know, some of the, both the requirements, but also the funding of this has shifted over the time. And as we learned more about it and looked at the opportunities that were available to us at Lee Manor, it became clear that it was going to have some significant financial impact to Gray County to be able to run this the way that staff and the Lynn, for that matter, felt would be optimal. Lee Manor has the larger resident home areas, and so in order to keep this behavioral support transition unit essentially whole, so that you weren't trying to manage our regular residents in addition to these higher acuity residents, we were going to have to set beds, either set beds in abeyance, or we just, we wouldn't, we would lose the funding for those beds if they weren't filled. And that was going to have a material impact on the overall net of the operations at Lee Manor. So by putting the application forward for Gray Gables, which has the smaller resident home areas, the funded beds for the BSTU don't have an impact on other parts of the operation, because you're not having to set beds aside. We looked carefully at how you could manage the separation of the BSTU clients along with the regular residents, and even that there was going to need to be some significant capital outlay to make that happen, it still wouldn't have been optimal. So with discussions with the Lynn and with the staff at Lee Manor and Jennifer, it was determined that moving to Gray Gables really made more sense.
So, Mr. Warden, is the plan then that we would be centralizing the behavioral support beds at Gray Gables for Gray County?
I would say so, but maybe Jennifer, what, Jennifer, do you wish to speak further on this?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Warden. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thanks. Yeah, so the behavioral transition unit would take over one home area of the Gray Gables sites. So 22, the application seems like 100 years ago, but I believe it was for a 20-bed long-term care home, and so we would still have 66 beds in Gray Gables filled. 20 of them would be behavioral support transition residents.
So just to clarify, then, all of Gray County's behavioral support beds would be at Gray Gables?
Just the transition unit. So there would still be residents with dementia and responsive behaviors that are supported similarly in all long-term care homes. So there would still be those residents in all of our three long-term care homes, but the BSTU would be a special designated unit, a transition unit to support long-term care of the hospital and long-term care homes across Gray County in supporting those residents who shouldn't be living in hospital but are not quite ready to transition into a regular long-term care home bed. This would be that in-between, that step down.
If I can add to, just like our long-term care homes are not only for Gray County residents, this BSTU, there's only a handful of them in the whole province. So this would be a site, I think, more to support, like, probably this southwestern Ontario. And so people could come to it from anywhere.
So, any further question there, Counselor Hicks? I think I saw your thumb go up, right? Okay. Okay, thank you, Madam CEO, and thank you, Jennifer, for that. Any other discussion on those sets of minutes? Okay, I'm going to go for the vote. Then, any opposed to the motion? All right, that's carried. Moving on then to the CAO Performance Evaluation Committee Minutes, I have that moved by Counselor Patterson, and second by Counselor Desai. The motion's on the floor. Is there any discussion on those sets of minutes? Okay, I don't see anybody. Any opposed to that motion? Okay, that is carried. Okay, we move on to item five on our agenda, closed meeting matters if required. I don't see anything listed there. I don't indicate anything there. So item six, this is with regards to the notice of, so business arising from the minutes, notice of intention to reconsider, provide it by March 12th, 2020 from a notice motion that came from Counselor O'Leary. And I have this for reconsideration. It's moved by Counselor O'Leary, and second by Counselor Mackey to put this back on the floor for reconsideration.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Sorry, can I just get an update from someone on the status of Counselor Burley? I am quite concerned that he hasn't been able to join us yet. I don't really want to go forward with this part of the agenda if everybody isn't here that should be here.
Madam?
Jody?
Yes, Jody?
Nancy's working with Dwight right now. It sounded like it might have been a Wi-Fi issue. He was switching over to his Mac to see if he could get connected with that. That was just one minute ago or so.
Do you suggest I move on to, the motion's on the floor right now. I'm not sure if we did a recess, or we wait a minute, or there's not, I don't know, I'm at the mercy of County Council. So I guess to you, Madam CEO, you felt that he had an interest to speak to this motion? Is that how you're thinking, Madam CEO?
I haven't had direct conversation with him on this matter. I would just feel better, given the interest in it, if everybody was available to us if that can happen. And if it can't, within the next minute or so, we'll just have to move ahead.
So, well, then why don't, maybe there's other discussion on this, and then we'll keep it on for him to join, if that's okay, Madam CEO?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the motion again is moved by Counselor O'Leary, second by Counselor Mackey to put it on the floor, and this is a notice of reconsideration from a decision that was done in July of 2019. I guess I'll first go to the mover, Counselor O'Leary. Do you wish to speak to this motion that's on the floor?
I do. I've got some concerns with some of the letters that came through, especially with the one saying that we could be leaving a million dollars on the table. So I don't know if someone wants to speak to that.
So, Madam CEO, maybe I'll go back to you first, and then maybe to Michael?
I think that those discussions will be most appropriately held at the time that Randy makes the presentation. What this reconsideration motion does is allows us to have then those conversations about the merits of a decision one way or another. This just will facilitate us being able to do that. If there's a nod and interest in reconsidering at all, then you don't really have a way forward to have those future discussions.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
That helps.
So basically, sorry, go ahead.
I have Counselor Desai that would like to speak to this item.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor O'Leary has asked a question that I was going to, so thank you for, thank you to him for the response.
Okay, I think I have Counselor Body, Madam Clerk, is that correct? Oh, no, no, okay.
And we do have Counselor Burley has joined us now.
Welcome. Welcome, Counselor Burley. Okay, just for your information, Counselor Burley, the notice of reconsideration is on the floor. It was moved by Counselor O'Leary, second by Counselor Mackey, and this is just for the reconsideration of what we're doing with the quarry. And there was a question asked with regards to the letters, and that will be dealt within the Committee of the Hall to the report that is first on the agenda there. So, I guess, just in summary, Madam CEO, by supporting this, opens it back up for new discussion on what we want to do with the quarry itself. So it doesn't, we're not locked.
That's entirely correct. This is just facilitating the ability for us to have another conversation about whether or not we wish to change direction.
Right. And this was sort of somewhat explained to us by Michael a few weeks back when we were going through this process. And does Michael, I know we're not in camera, or this is the open session, should I, should, but Michael, do I need any clarity from Michael or Solicitor, Madam CEO?
Certainly, Michael, if you want to add anything to the comments that have already been made, are you intent?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. There's nothing really to add. I think this is entirely appropriate to focus on the question of reconsideration at this point. Further consideration of the actual comments on the proposal would go to Committee of the Hall.
Right. This just allows that process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Mr. Warden, I do see Counselor Hicks's hand raised. I'm not sure if he has a question or not. No?
No. Counselor Hicks?
That was a hand raised for my previous question.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure.
Okay, let's, thank you, Madam Clerk. It's good to be, you know, we want to make sure we have all opportunity for people to ask questions. Okay, so...
And Counselor Soever would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Soever.
Yes, Mr. Warden. I was just wondering, since, you know, the instruction or the direction from council was last July, I was wondering how far we actually got in considering the lease option, and if there was information that came out of that process that might help our deliberations today.
Okay, thank you for that. And I guess I would direct that either to the Director of Transportation, Pat Boy. Pat, do you have a comment to that? Sorry, my internet's cutting in and out here. I missed that question. Could you repeat that? Counselor Soever?
Yes, I was, you know, since that direction to investigate a possibility of a lease was last July, I was wondering how far that process got, and whether there was any information that came out of that process that might be useful for our deliberation today?
We were working on it. I guess all I could say was, it was going to be very complicated, because we weren't sure if we were asking for an amount or to charge something for a monthly rent or yearly rent versus a royalty on payment. So we had little ways to go to finish it, but, so there was nothing groundbreaking that came out of there that we really discovered, no. Any, go ahead, Madam CEO.
If I could, just so, just to clarify for all of council, we had been working on developing an appropriate lease agreement that we could then put out for interested operators to consider. And because this is, this was new ground for us, Pat had had to do an awful lot of outreach into the various experts to try and determine what the best way to structure this was. But we had never actually put anything on the street and had never brought a potential lease back to council. We were, had started that work in the fall, but at the same time, then, I think, was it in October, that we had the direction to have the outreach on this new property. So the two things kind of crossed, if you will, in their timing.
Okay, any follow-up there, Counselor Soever?
Thank you. No, I guess, I was just wondering, you know, given, but I guess there's no indication of value from the process that was underway, because we didn't get far enough. So I have nothing further.
And by the way, welcome to County Council. Welcome back for your time off there, and I forgot to mention that at the beginning. So thanks for joining us. Again, I know you've been following along, and just from that, I know you've been off for a period of time. Do you have any general questions with regards to this? Because I know the minutes and that sort of captured, but you missed the last meeting, so that may be more in the Committee of the Hall that you maybe have questions in that part. Any other questions from County Council? Any sign of Mr. Woodbury, Counselor Woodbury, joining us? I know, Madam Clerk, you were saying that he may be joining us?
Yes, he indicated he was going to join us later. I haven't seen him join as of yet.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this notice of reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to put it to vote. So are there any opposed to this motion? And I'm going to help you, Madam Clerk, if there's any opposition for you to forward that through a chat or seeing somebody's hand. Any opposed to this resolution? Madam Clerk?
I see no hands raised, and I see nothing in the chat, Warden.
Okay, so that motion is carried then. We have no bylaws for today. Generally, at this agenda, we do have a section there for good news and all that stuff, but we weren't sure whether we should have that in there or not. We will have opportunity to have a conversation on the next Committee of the Hall with regards to COVID-19, and if there's, I'll have some leeway there, maybe if there's other conversations during that point on our Committee of the Hall, if you wish to talk about events or issues in your municipalities. So at this time, I have a motion to adjourn and move by Counselor Burley, and second by Counselor Desai. Is there anybody opposed to that adjournment? Seeing none, we're adjourned, then, our council meeting is now adjourned at, I'm going to say, what, 10:25, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Warden.
Okay. All right, does anybody need to go get a glass of orange juice, as Counselor Hicks says there? It's just, it's very inviting. Okay. We should move along here fairly quickly. I don't know, do you want to, you want to take two minutes to get a glass of water or whatever before we get into Committee of the Hall? Is that needed? Because I was thinking of going and get a glass of water here. So just hang in there, and I'm going to go glass it. You can look at the little hole in my ceiling where the soap pipe used to go. All right. And Counselor Hicks, I got my orange juice. Very good. All right. So moving on to our Committee of the Hall, and seeing that this is a revised agenda, and I understand, Madam Clerk, the revision through terror was the delegation, that the three attachments were added from the original agenda. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. So, all right, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. And we'll say that, I don't know what time it is, 10:27 or something like that. Is there any declaration of interest with regards to the agenda of the Committee of the Hall with the members here today? Any interest there, Madam Clerk?
Nothing that I see, Mr. Warden.
Okay, so then I will say there isn't any, and if one does declare, you can declare at that time, as you know. So then, we have here the three delegation letters. Madam Clerk, that's sort of for information, I presume, as if it was people speaking to us. So, but it is information that's pertaining to the other parts of the agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct. We put them on as delegations. They are written delegations due to our electronic participation right now, and they are for your information and related to the first report under Items for Direction.
Okay, thank you for that. And just for procedural moving forward on this electronic meeting, so as we post future agendas, that will be a process for the public that will be able to make written delegation formats like this. Do we explain it? Okay.
Yes, that is, and we will treat them exactly the same way we would if someone were here in person and they were presenting a PowerPoint presentation.
Good. Okay, thank you very much for that. All right, so then we're moving down to item four, Items for Direction and Discussion. And at this time, this is a report from our Director of Planning, Randy Switzer, and we do have a mover and a securer, and that's moved by Counselor O'Leary, and second by Counselor Desai. And I presume Randy's out there somewhere to speak to the report.
Thank you, Ward McQueen. Can everyone hear me? All right, I was going to try and share a screen that says Host Disabled Participants Screen Sharing. Is that something that can be turned on, Rob?
You're good, Randy.
Okay. Just one second, I'll try and pull this up here. Just one second. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. So, thank you, Ward McQueen. So the purpose of this report is to present a proposed property exchange of the county quarry for lands in the municipality of West Gray in the settlement area of Durham. Everyone see the second slide there?
It's, the second side is smaller, Randy, but I don't know if you were able to switch it to a bigger...
Or can you advance it at the bottom of your screen to go to slide two?
Excuse me.
Looked like you can.
Randy, I think what we're seeing is your presentation view with your speaker's notes on it right before you minimized it, and not that your mouse isn't moving on the screen, if that helps.
Okay, let me just try again here. So what are you, what are you able to see right now?
It's the speaker view. Rather than presentation view.
Okay.
Now, we can still see your speaker's notes, but we can, it advanced to slide two.
Okay. Let me see how I can change this. Just bear with me one second. Sorry, I have my notes on one screen, right? And so I have to have those in order to speak to the report. Okay. Let's try that. Still just the speaker notes?
It's okay. No, we see the main slide, Randy. You can work with it.
Okay, okay. See the second side now?
Yeah, it's good, Randy.
And still can. Sorry, I'm trying to manage multiple screens here, so. Okay. So in September 2019, the province approved the construction of a 120-bed long-term care facility to be built in the settlement area of Durham in West Gray. And this new facility would replace the existing 100-bed Rockwood Terrace long-term care home. Following the province's approval, council directed staff to investigate property options in Durham for the development of this new long-term care home. It's estimated that the county needs approximately four to six acres to construct this new facility. It's estimated that the county needs approximately four to six acres to construct this new facility. Property options were reviewed, which identified at the time there are limited options available that were large enough to construct the new Rockwood Terrace. And following this initial review of properties in Durham, council directed staff on November 28th to pursue the acquisition of a property adjacent to the current Rockwood Terrace facility and to enter into discussions with the landowner to determine if they'd be interested in selling a portion of that property. County staffing engaged the landowner being Durham Stone and Paving, Inc. And as per council's direction, and when approached on, on November 28th, the landowner presented an option of a land exchange for the larger property in, in Durham in exchange for the county quarry. Based on a review of the offer from Durham Stone Paving, council directed staff to negotiate a land exchange agreement subject to due diligence inspections and subject to final approval of the agreement by County Council. Staff with the assistance of outside legal counsel proceeded to negotiate a land exchange agreement with DSPI. Due diligence inspections were then undertaken by both county staff and DSPI. And county staff and DSPI confirmed to each other in late February that they were satisfied with results of those inspections. I'll try to advance the next slide. Can you see the Durham property there?
Yes.
Just go back to my notes. The lands being offered in exchange for the county quarry are shown in blue and purple on the maps on your screen. And these are parts B, B1, B2, C, and D. The, the subject lands are located south of Gray Road 4 and east of Highway 6 and directly south of the existing Rockwood Terrace long-term care home. The lands to be potentially acquired are approximately 32 acres in size. The lands could also be accessed via five existing public roads. Parts A, E, and F, or the red areas on the map, would be retained by DSPI. The lands identified as part C and part D in figure one would allow for a future extension of South Street East from Concarden Street South to concession one. And both part C and part D would be acquired by the county, but would be leased back to DSPI for a period of 10 years. This lease is required by, by Durham Stone and Paving to complete any remaining extraction of aggregate in part F in accordance with their existing aggregate license, which requires that it maintain control of part D as a setback during extraction. County staff understand that there's minimal activity that occurs within that existing aggregate operation today. Currently, part C, D, E, and F in figure one are part of the existing aggregate license owned and operated by DSPI. Should the land exchange move forward, Durham Stone Paving would revise the existing license by removing parts E and C on the map from the aggregate license immediately. Those will be removed immediately and then eventually removing part D following the lease period. The current aggregate license has a 30-meter setback from the aggregate license boundary, and that essentially lies along the north side of part C and D on figure one. And therefore, no aggregate extraction is permitted within part C and D. So by allowing the lease of part D for lands for a specific period of time, Durham Stone Paving can continue to extract up to that 30-meter setback based on their current area license and then rehabilitate these lands in accordance with, with their license. So now you should see the policy context slide. Notes here again. So I'll just touch on some highlights of the policies in terms of the, the county official plan policies and MWS Gray documents as well. So the county official plan designates most of the lands as primary settlement area. And there's a small portion of the lands directly adjacent to concession one that's designated as rural. That small portion is also identified as being within the aggregate resource area. However, looking at the air photos, it appears that most of this area is wet and therefore the aggregate potential for the small portion is, is not suitable for aggregate. This combined with the fact that it's adjacent to the settlement area of Durham and adjacent to some existing residential uses makes this small portion of land not suitable for future aggregate extraction. Appendix A of the county official plan identifies a portion of the subject lands within the wellhead protection area for Durham. The county official plan does not identify any environmental constraints on the subject lands. So based on a staff review, the development of the subject lands within that primary settlement area for the long-term care home as well as other uses conforms to the county's official plan. With respect to the West Gray official plan, there was an official plan amendment known as Local Official Plan Amendment Number Three that was approved by the county in 2016. LOPA 3 designated majority of the subject lands as residential and included some specific policies for a portion of the lands. At the time of LOPA 3, there were questions as to whether or not the land shown as part C and D in figure one, and that's what we call the future extension of the South Street East lands. There was a question of whether or not those will be required in order to develop all the lands that were designated as residential. Given that the lands of the county would be acquiring are different from the subject lands in LOPA 3, part of site-specific policies no longer apply as the county is acquiring beyond the lands designated in LOPA 3. Notwithstanding this, it's county staff's opinion that the site-specific policies have been addressed as the county is acquiring a portion of the industrial lands being, again, that future extension of South Street East, which can be used for municipal roads and servicing in the future. West Gray staff have agreed with this interpretation and have indicated that they have no issues with the land exchange occurring. Should council move forward with the land exchange, the county will work with West Gray to develop an overall concept plan for, for those lands. There was another site-specific policy in Local Official Plan Amendment Number Three, which requires the completion of what's called a D6 study. And this is required to address any mitigation measures that may be required to ensure that the development of the subject lands will be compatible with the adjacent gravel pit. And prior to completing this D6 study, the county wants to work with West Gray and the community to develop an overall concept plan that would maximize the development of the site and would address the needs of the community in terms of things like affordable housing, seniors housing, accessible housing, and of course, the new long-term care home. West Gray staff supports that process. Another site-specific policy in Local Official Plan Amendment Number Three notes that a record of site condition is required for addressing historical use of the site and possible soil contamination. And during the time of, of LOPA 3, it was assumed that a record of site condition would be required as the lands were previously designated as industrial. GM Blue Plan has completed a Phase One and Two Environmental Site Assessment for the property. And they note that the Record of Site Condition Regulation is based on actual property use. And since the property is outside of the licensed pit, it's not deemed to have industrial use. Based on this, it's the county's opinion that a record of site condition is not required to develop the residential lands. The county will, of course, work with West Gray staff on these matters should council move forward with the land exchange. With respect to the West Gray zoning bylaw, the majority of the lands are zoned as medium-density residential with a holding. Other portions of the lands are zoned as extractive industrial, a small sliver institutional, and an industrial zone. And again, that's the, the future South Street East's extension lands. Any development on the lands would occur within the medium-density residential zone. The holding symbol attached to a portion of those lands can be removed by West Gray Council once a detailed development proposal has been submitted. Municipality West Gray staff have noted that they are satisfied that a zoning bylaw amendment is not required to develop the new Rockwood Terrace. For the development of the additional lands, the ideal zone would be the mixed-use zone. And West Gray has noted that this can be addressed as part of the update to the zoning bylaw, which they are planning to do later in 2020. With respect to due diligence, the county has had pre-development consultations with staff from West Gray, Sauki Valley Conservation Authority and the Source Water Protection Authority. And no concerns have been identified with respect to developing the subject lands. There does appear to be some wet pockets on the east lands, and we have engaged Sauki Valley to determine if there are any hazard lands or regulated areas on site. And SBCA has confirmed that there are no regulated areas or hazard lands identified on the subject lands. There is a potential storm sewer that exists on the lands identified as B2 and figure one. And this will be investigated further as part of the overall stormwater management plan. SBAC did note that historical species at risk occurrences have been identified within a square kilometer of the subject lands. And based on existing information available to county staff, it does not appear that these species at risk occurrences occur on the lands, on the subject lands. This will be investigated further as part of future studies and investigations. With respect to further due diligence, the county hired GM Blue Plan to conduct a Phase One Environmental Site Assessment and a Scope Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment, which identified no major concerns. There were several fill pile samples that slightly exceeds the residential criteria, meaning that these filled piles cannot be used for residential development. And GM Blue Plan recommended that a condition be included in the agreement requiring that Durham Stone and Paving remove those piles to the county satisfaction prior to completing the actual land exchange. And those, those conditions have been included in the agreement that's attached to the report. There are also a couple piles on site that contain broken pieces of concrete. Those would also be removed by the landowner. And the approximate locationals fill piles are identified on figure one in the report, which should also be currently on your screen. So now I'm gonna go to the next slide. So the image on your screen should be, show the, an air photo of the county quarry. And the county quarry is located on Gray Road 40 in the municipality of Gray Highlands. There was a previous report that was presented to council back in 2019, which provided options for the future of the county quarry, including selling the quarry or leasing it. And that, a link to that report is also attached to this, this staff report. County Committee of the Whole passed a motion in June 2019, which was endorsed by County Council in July 2019, which directed staff to pursue the option of leasing the county quarry. Council at the time expressed a desire to retain some value with the quarry and therefore wanted to pursue the option of leasing it to an outside operator. Based on this motion, staff began working on a leasing process. And you heard that from Director Pat Hoy and our CEO Kim Wingrove, that, that staff started working on that process. And before this process could result in the issuing of procurement documents, the land exchange proposal was made and therefore was put on hold. In order for Committee of the Whole to consider this land exchange, council would need to approve reconsideration of the previous motion to pursue the option of leasing the county quarry. So on the slide, on the screen, hopefully it's the valuation, the slide. So the previous valuation, the county quarry valued, valued it at approximately $1.4 million. And this is based on the Altus Report. This valuation has been confirmed by an independent third-party quarry expert who has valued the county quarry between 1.4 million and 1.5 million. There are some existing stockpiles on site. Those have been valued at approximately 215,000. And therefore, the total value of the quarry with those stockpiles is approximately 1.62 to 1.72 million. The lands in the town of Durham, as I mentioned, are approximately 32 acres in size. And recent property valuation has estimated that land designated as residential in Durham is leased 52,500 per acre, which then values the lands in Durham to be at least 1.68 million. Recent property sales have indicated that 52,500 acres may be on the low side with a recent property selling in Durham for approximately 125,000 per acre. So it's estimated that the value of the 32-acre property in Durham is somewhere between 1.68 million to approximately 3 million. There are also other benefits for the lands in Durham. So the initial development phase, of course, would focus on the new Rockwood Terrace. And this needs to be completed by 2025 in order to meet the province's timeframes. The exact location of that new facility will be determined as part of the overall concept plan and follow future studies and investigations. As mentioned previously, it's estimated that approximately four to six acres of land is required to redevelop that. So the additional 25 acres can be used to develop other things. It could be used to develop, for example, a campus of care model whereby a variety of housing options and services could be provided, allowing residents to age in place. This could include affordable apartments, senior bungalow townhouse units, and retirement home units. Open space and trails will also be a key consideration so that residents and families can enjoy the outdoor space and stay active while they are progressing through different stages in life. There are also other significant benefits with the lands being located adjacent to the existing Rockwood Terrace. Things like moving residents and equipment from the existing location to the new location will be much easier with it being in close proximity. Future options for utilizing the existing Rockwood Terrace facility and integrating it as part of this overall concept plan will also be possible given that it's adjacent to these lands. The subject plans have also, as I mentioned before, have the ability to connect to five existing public roads. And in addition to this, the 32 acres represents almost 3% of the total land area in the settlement area of Durham. So by having a larger land holding, it allows for the creation of a long-term complete community vision when it comes to developing these lands. So Notice of the Possible Sale of the County Quarry was published in the advance on Wednesday, March 18th and was posted on the county's website on March 19th. If Committee of the Whole decides to recommend the proposed land exchange, staff would then move forward with finalizing the exchange of lands, including preparing a bylaw for council's consideration. Staff would also then move forward with completing the required studies to develop the lands, including submitting applications to West Gray as noted previously. The funds required for any future studies and, and the applications for redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace would be funded from the Long-Term Care Redevelopment Reserve. Should Committee of the Whole not recommend the proposed land exchange, then the process to lease the county quarry to an outside operator would resume. There would also be the need to, to start the search for lands to construct a new long-term care home. And it should be noted that the original deadline set by the province to confirm a site for the new long-term care home in Durham was December 2019. In terms of financial and resource implications, a survey of the lands within Durham will be required. That's estimated to cost approximately $10,000. As proposed, again, this will be funded from that Long-Term Care Redevelopment Reserve. The funds required to reconstruct the new long-term care facility will be covered by the county and the province. And the county has set aside funds to redevelop Rockwood Terrace, and it's estimated that this will cost approximately $35 million. Almost there, Mr. Warden. So the motion before Committee of the Whole is that this report be received and that pursuant to the sale and acquisition of land policy and sale of land procedure, that the quarry be declared surplus to the needs of the county, that the value of the quarry, together with the value of the stockpiles, be established as equivalent to the value of Durham property, that the quarry, together with the stockpiles, be sold through an exchange with Durham Stone and Paving, Inc. for the Durham property pursuant to a conditional agreement between the county and DSPI. And that was, again, mentioned as made effective February 27th, and that's attached to the report. And that the Durham property be purchased pursuant to the provisions of that agreement. And that any costs associated with the land exchange be funded from the Long-Term Care Redevelopment Reserve. And that a bylaw be brought forward to council to approve the agreement and the county's entry into further agreements contemplated therein. So I apologize for the length of the presentation. However, this is an important topic and staff wants to make sure that council has all the information that you need in order to make an informed decision, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for that, Randy, and you're very clear and concise. And again, thank you for your written report because it covered, I think, basically everything that we have gone through this process. Do, just before I go to questions on this, Madam CEO, do I need any comments from our solicitor on this report or only if there's questions asked?
I think only if there's questions asked.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And Madam Clerk, I think I saw some, that there's a few questions. And at my right, O'Leary, Council Desai, and Robinson, is that the three that I saw? And my right, O'Leary, Counselor Desai, and Robinson, is that the three that I saw?
Yes, Counselor O'Leary, Counselor Desai, and Counselor Robinson.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So, moving on then, so Counselor O'Leary, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So my first is just a comment. We have three letters here from Miller, Sutherland, and Aggregates. All three are major drivers in our economic, throughout the entire county. So I think we owe it to them to at least consider what they're saying in their letters. What I want to ask is, the, the one that concerns me the most is the one from Lockers. Actually, it's from their solicitor, David White. But he's saying that we could be leaving a million dollars on the table. So why, why could we not put the quarry up for sale with a minimum bid? I, I don't understand how the, how the purchasing or selling goes legally. But if it's worth a total of 1.72 million, why don't we put it for sale with a minimum bid of 2.72 million? And, and let these guys either fork out the cash or forever hold their silence? Because I'm not interested in it, in leaving a million dollars on the table on behalf of, of Gray County taxpayers, if, if that's possible.
So I, I'm going to maybe go to Michael on this, Madam CEO, just on the valuation. Is that correct, Madam CEO?
Yes, you can, you can do that. I think the question comes back to, has the county seriously undervalued the quarry given the potential to mine below the water table? And I think the critical point there is the potential. And there's, there is no assurance at this stage about what an application to amend the, the current license might result in. And so I'll let Michael speak, and I think Randy also knows quite a lot about this particular aspect of things.
Okay, thank you, Madam CEO, and I'll go to Michael.
To the extent that it addresses that you've been looking for legal advice on this, I'd suggest we do that in closed, but I believe Randy can speak comprehensively to the valuation outside of the legal advice.
Yeah. Just before, just before you go ahead there, Randy, just the evaluation that was done in Randy's report, it talked about a third-party independent that reviewed the valuation. Do you want to make any comment to that before I go to Randy? In a sense of the process that went through?
I think Randy can, can see that process.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Randy?
Yeah, so in terms of, so talk about the valuation in, in general. And Kim, Kim mentioned this, in terms of the valuation can only be provided based on what is approved today. So what the current license allows for today for the county quarry. So right now, that obviously is an above-the-water-table license. So the valuation can only be based on what's, what exists today. Because we can't speculate as to what the value could be if the approvals were, were applied for and, and because we don't know if that would actually happen. So approvals would be required in order to extract below the water table. The valuation of quarry, as I mentioned, was based on information from the Altus report. There was an estimate on the existing stockpiles that were also added to that valuation, as well as, as I mentioned, the independent third-party quarry expert. So the, we reached out to that expert to get a valuation on, on the existing quarry. And it, that's, that valuation came back at 1.4 to 1.5 million. And based on the Altus report that was previously made, that estimated about 1.4 million. So we're pretty confident that the current value of the quarry, as it exists today, as, plus the stockpiles, is between that 1.62 million to 1.72 million.
Okay. And, and back to you, Counselor O'Leary.
Okay, well, I, I'm not, first of all, I'm not interested in going, looking into licenses or below the water table or anything. I'm just, I'm just saying, like, if, if someone tells me that, or appraises my house at $300,000, I, I can still list the property for 499 or 599 and get what I can get. So that's what I'm asking. If, if someone is saying that the quarry is worth X number of dollars, and these guys are saying you're, you're gonna leave a million dollars on the table, why can't we sell the quarry the way it is for 2.72 million as the minimum bid? And give these guys the opportunity, either fork out the cash or we can forget about these three letters?
Okay, any further comments from Madam CEO, or Michael, or Randy in that?
At this time.
Okay, so I guess just in, just in clarity, it's, it's sort of, part of what's being proposed is we're doing swap for land to swap for land. So I guess, I just want to put it out there, is, is the value of what the land's being swapped for is somewhat considered, it could be valued lower than what maybe is in place too? I think, Randy, you spoke to that, that, from your calculation of 54,000 or something per acre, but then more recent sales in, in Durham have suggested it could be higher per acre. Is that what you were saying in your report?
So, yeah.
I guess what I'm trying, go ahead.
Yeah, that's exactly correct, because we're estimating that the value of the, of the Durham lands between 1.68 million to approximately 3 million. And as I mentioned, there are other additional benefits for, that we see having the lands in Durham that being adjacent to the existing Rockwood Terrace facility, plus some of the other points that I mentioned previously. So, so that's why, you know, council needs to obviously be comfortable with, with, with ensuring that at least there's the equivalent value between what, what we'd be acquiring through the Durham land based on what we'd be potentially giving up, so to speak, with the quarry. So in the end, you know, based on the valuation date, we feel that there's at least an equal, equal share between the property in Durham and, and the county quarry. But council, at the end of the day, needs to be comfortable with that decision.
So just for clarity, we're not putting this up for sale. We're swapping value of one piece for the value of the other piece. So in the sense, going back to Counselor Larry's point, we're leaving a million dollars on the table. I guess the question, back to Counselor Larry, is, is the value of the quarry equal to the value that we're trying to obtain? And I guess, and I'm only throwing that back in the sense of, are we, is that value fair to the value of what we're swapping? Because this is not just selling the property, we're making a land swap here. So, and I think, Michael, you made that point clear a while back with regards to process. We had to have those appraisals done. And I don't know if you wish to speak to this anymore about one for the other, because that was sort of what's been negotiated here. Is that correct?
With respect to what was put out there before, what I would say at this point is that I hope everyone has available to them the report that was brought forward in closed session with respect to the legal advice on the topic. And if we want to go into that more, I'd be happy to, to do that, but perhaps in a closed context.
Okay, thank you for that, Michael. I'm gonna go back to Counselor O'Leary. I just want to make sure that your points got across before I go to the next question. Counselor O'Leary, is there?
Just for clarity, did I, Randy, did I hear you say that this land that we're swapping, or the land that we're getting, is worth 1.6 million to 3 million?
Yeah, that's correct. That's based on existing, or previous property valuation, as well as recent property sales, we're estimating it to be in that range.
Okay, that's a really big range, but that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Larry, and then I'm gonna go to Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. One of the letters also mentions the fact that, that they were given very, very little notice. And, and part of that could be to do with the fact that this was advertised only in the flesh in advance, which, despite being a terrific newspaper, doesn't exactly have a large readership base. So my question is, is there merit to deferring a decision on this today to allow further input from, from the parties that have indicated that they would like to provide further input?
I'm gonna take you, that question to Madam Clerk and process first, and then I'll, I'll branch out. So Madam Clerk, process, I think it was explained to us a month ago at our last meeting. Do you want to speak to that at all, Madam Clerk?
So through the land acquisition, sale and acquisition policy, the notice is to be put in the most appropriate newspaper within the area. That was the advance. Now, it also was printed in the Dundalk Herald, because they do, often do the very same thing that the advance does. And it was also posted on the county's website, and it needs to be posted for three weeks, and that's what it was.
Okay, thank you for that clarity, Madam Clerk. Back to you, Counselor Desai.
No further questions. I was unaware that it was on the county website, so at this point, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, and through you, Warden McQueen, Director Schwartzert, thank you very much for the very detailed report and presentation. I just would like to go back to planning process and how it will be applied at the local level, specifically the holding provision. So in terms of the discussion at the local level through council, and then returning that, that decision back to county, council, and staff, what timeframe and what does that process look like?
Randy, do you want to, or who was that?
Thank you, through you, through you, Mr. Warden. With respect to the, the holding symbol, so that's attached to subject lands, so that can be removed by West Gray Council. And the requirement to remove the holding symbol is, is indicating that once a detailed development proposal has been submitted. And as mentioned, I think the, the desire from staff, as well as when we had some initial discussions with West Gray staff, is develop an overall concept plan of what this site could look like. We want to try to obviously maximize the, the development of the 32 acres. We want to look for opportunities in terms of trying to address some community need, whether it's affordable housing or whether it's something else. We want to make sure that we're able to maximize the, the value of, of these lands. And, and so, once we've developed that overall concept plan, that would address the holding symbol requirements. And then West Gray Council can then lift that holding, and then we can proceed with the development. And so that's one of the kind of the first steps that we want to do with West Gray and with the community, to come up with what that could look like for the lands in, in Durham.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Robinson.
Mr. Warden, I have Counselor Soever.
Okay, Counselor Soever, you have the floor.
Yes, I, I share Counselor O'Leary's concerns here. You know, we, we talked about the quarry before, and, you know, we looked at different options. We had a valuation of 1.4, 1.5 on that. And, you know, we, we said, well, let's look at leasing it, you know, to see if we can do better. That process didn't go very far. And now we're moving forward with a swap. And, you know, I was all in favor of the swap. But now we've got three reputable quarry operators coming up and saying, whoa, guys, what are you doing? And, and one is actually saying we're leaving money on the table. Now, you know, I know we looked at a lot of different pieces of land for this, and I, and I gotta be careful what I say here, because those were discussed in closed. And, you know, we, we looked at a lot of different pieces of land. And, you know, obviously, cost was a factor in some of our decisions. However, if it turns out that the quarry is actually worth more, you know, some of those other sites then may become viable. And I can't say any more than that, really, unless we were to go into closed and, and talk specifics. But, you know, I think our decision really hinges on what value somebody might pay for the quarry. And it sounds, well, talk is cheap. The only way you're really gonna know is if you put it out and say, okay, in seven days, let us know what you're willing to pay, and, you know, deliver a check. And if people say no, then I'm happy with the swap. But, you know, I am too, I am concerned that, you know, to have three people come up and now say, whoa, guys, you know, we're very interested. Question is, are they? And so I do have a concern, but I, I think the swap idea is still good. But, you know, it's just a bit surprising that you, you get three expressions of interest. Is, but the question is, are they real expressions of interest? Or are they just want to throw a monkey wrench in the plans? So the only way you'd find that out is, you know, ask them to firm them up.
Okay.
Can I ask if, if there is interest then in, in taking a discussion into closed session?
That's what I was just gonna, Madam CEO, if, because I know that you mentioned it a few minutes ago, that the search for property, I think, in Durham started back in October. And I'm not gonna get into other details, although you mentioned that just a few minutes ago. And I think you also mentioned that.
That's not, that was specific to this particular piece of property.
Yes, that's right. And, and also, I think it was mentioned that we were supposed to secure a piece of property for Rockwood by December of 2019. And so I know we're, we're moving on, so I think there is some sense of urgency and sense of securing property too. So, Madam CEO, are you suggesting then that, that we go in the camera then to maybe cover some of those details that we can't speak in open? Because obviously, there was discussion that had happened between your staff and the parties that are involved, correct?
Correct.
So I guess process, is that, I guess, just before I ask, process, Madam Clerk, to do that, does that mean we just go to cell, our phone? How does that work? How do we go into camera in the sense of securing this as, as for in-camera? Madam Clerk, or maybe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A couple of things. I think Rob will stop the recording or pause the recording while we go into closed. Council members will need to ensure that their areas that they are in are secure closed meeting discussions. And because the closed meeting matter was not on the agenda in accordance with the procedural bylaw, we'd need two-thirds vote in order to amend the agenda to put that on, that motion on the floor.
So basically, if I have a mover and second or Madam Clerk, it's gonna take two-thirds to go in camera?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Anything else from you, Madam CEO, or anybody else, before I put it to the question? Or if anybody'd like to move? Seeing none? Okay, is there, is there interest to go in camera? If so, please indicate by a mover and a second, or please.
Counselor Potter, I'll move it.
Hey, Counselor Potter, is there a second?
Counselor Clumpus, I will second it.
Okay, okay, for everyone, there's a mover by Counselor Potter, a second by Counselor Clumpus, that we move into enclosed camera. And just give me the clarity on that, Madam CEO. Is that to do with property, or how, what's the wording on that?
Yes, you're, you're correct. I think two things. I think we are looking for advice from our solicitor. And this also has to do with the, the acquisition or disposal of property.
Property, okay. Is that understood by Counselor Potter and Counselor Clumpus? I'm assuming they heard me. Okay.
Yeah, so, sorry, I, I probably should have added that, but yes.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear of the motion, because we don't have it on the screen, and I just want to be very clear on that. Okay, process, Madam Clerk, as far as recorded, you want to have a recorded vote? How are you gonna recognize everybody for two-thirds?
I think if, if there are any opposed to going into closed session, they can use the raise hand feature, and it will, it will look to those. And if there is nothing, then we can declare it two-thirds passed.
Mr. Warden? Yeah, yeah, Counselor O'Leary?
It's Brian. I have, I had to answer the door, I didn't hear the motion. Can you read it one more time?
Yeah, so it's moved by Counselor Potter, second by Counselor Clumpus, that we move into closed session with, to, to receive advice from our solicitor, and also to... with to receive advice from our solicitor and also to deal with acquisition of property. Thank you. And it needs two-thirds, two-thirds majority to have it because it was not on the agenda. Okay, is there any other questions before I call the vote? Okay, seeing none, are there any opposed to going in camera? Madam Clerk?
I see no hands being raised, Mr. Warden.
Okay, I will then consider that is carried. And and Rob, you're going to shut the video off. Please make sure you're.
Maybe pa- pause for a moment and allow Rob to do whatever he needs to do.
Recording now.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, well, he's getting on to that. How did it go? All righty, he was just waiting to get back and build. Okay, so then, moving on then to, back to the item that's on the agenda and that's item A. Further, and that was moved by Counselor O'Leary, second by Counselor Desai, any further discussion with regards to the item A? The motions on the floor.
Mr. Warden, if I may?
Yes.
Could you just please confirm for council and the public that we only went into closed for the purposes for what we indicated we were going into?
I will. Okay, thank you for that, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
The purpose why we went in camera, just get my fellowship here, is we went in to speak to litigation, issues of litigation, and also with regards to property acquisition. And those are the only items and that's, the discussion was only to do with those two points.
It was actually solicitor-client privilege and position, yes.
Okay, I got the solicitor part.
Yep, you did.
Okay, it's a little harder. We see it on the screen and I was just scurrying through my notes here. So, yes, thank you for that clarity, Madam Clerk. All right, so now we're in open session and thank you for following me along there. So now we, like I said, we have the motion that's on the floor. Again, that was moved by Counselor O'Leary, second by Counselor Desai. Any further discussion on on that proposed land exchange, county quarry and lands in the town of Durham? Any further discussion on that? Madam Clerk, do we have everybody online that's supposed to be online or on the? Okay, very good. So same process then, I will then ask if there's any opposition to this motion? Any indication of any opposition, Madam Clerk?
I see nothing in the chat and I see no raised hands, sir.
Okay, the motion is carried. Thank you. All right, moving on to item B, this is with regards.
May I request a two-minute break?
You can. So let's do that at, let's say, eleven forty-five. We'll take a two-minute break. Okay, we will do that. I'll call this meeting back to order at eleven fifty AM. And moving forward with our next report. I'm on here, right? Everybody can hear me. Our next item, item B is a treasurer's statement. And I have moved by Counselor Patterson and Counselor Body. Is there any discussion on, and this is the treasurer's statement, council's remuneration and expense to be received for information? Any question or comments, sir? Okay, seeing none, any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Okay, moving on to item C, this is with regards to debt management policy. I need a new mover. I did originally have Counselor Woodbury. Would somebody like to move that?
Counselor Carlton will move that.
Counselor, okay, well, you were the second, but so you're moving as Counselor Carlton is moving that, do I have a second?
If you need one.
Sorry, oh, Counselor, time Counselor Robinson, I heard that. Okay, okay, so that's on Counselor Carlton, Counselor Robinson. Mr. Webler, would you, do you have anything to add or would you do, are you looking to do a bit of a presentation here or is it, you feel it's pretty self-explanatory?
Maybe, I wouldn't mind giving a few comments, just.
Yep, go ahead.
Over this, so the county's had very little debt in the past and we've never had a debt management policy. And just moving into considering entering into or taking on some some debt or considerable debt with long-term care bills and additions. I thought it best that we create a policy. And the province, they set out a limit in the municipal act saying that, you know, your debt limit is twenty-five percent of your own source revenues. What's being recommended in this policy at the current time is ten percent. There is some leeway for that. If the counselors want to take a little more risk than that, I've seen, I've seen ranges from like Wellington County being six percent to Whitby being at twelve percent, here in at twelve and a half, and I believe Oshawa is at fifteen percent. So there is some, what council's comfortable with here. I started as staff with, based on readings from BMA who do, as the municipal reports, where they say that credit, when credit analysis are being done by those companies, they look at a ten percent to be a prudent range for debt of your own source revenue. So as staff, that's where I started this this report and that. So, and I have included in there some illustrations about the debt coming on, what our financial statements will look like and what that will do to our ARL and what then room you'd have left based on that ten percent. And in saying all that, at any time, part of that procedure states, you know, council wishes to surpass that that limit of ten percent, that it could still be done by a resolution passed in open session council. So it's wanting to put this out there. I think it's something needed now. We're going down, going down this road with debt for long-term care.
And certainly, it's a policy that gives guidance and sort of, sort of steers the ship. And certainly, if there's unforeseen circumstances that does arise, council does, are charged to make those decisions if they feel need to change from what you're proposing for sure. I want to say also, Kevin, you've done a great job looking after everything and, you know, so kudos to you on that. Okay, any question from county council on this policy? Counselor Soever, I see your hand, so I'll recognize you first. Go ahead, Counselor Squibb.
Yes, the own source revenue, how is that defined? Like, if you have taxes that are unpaid, is that still considered or is that, is it, is it taxes collected? Because with the the current crisis we're in, we've already had a lot of people concerned about how they pay their property taxes. And so I think, you know, I think we need to be prudent and I agree the ten percent is a reasonable number. But I just wanted to get some clarity on that. Should our revenues drop substantially, which they might? Is our unpaid taxes considered in that?
Okay, thank you for that question. Kevin, do you wish to answer that question?
Let's say the way, way these are recorded, based on, we're not going on a cash basis when we're doing our financials. That those would be as receivable, so they'd be shown as as part of your own source revenues until you decided you need to write them off or or there was an indication that was going to be the case, that you'd have to bring that up, you know, identify that with your auditor, that that revenue is not, you're foreseeing that it's not going to be achieved. I think that would be a discussion that we'd want at that time.
Does that answer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so just remember that it's, it's, it's still due until you write them off, right?
If you have with your auditors that that is not something that's going to be, you'd have to identify. That, you know, this is in jeopardy and stuff, so I think that'd be something, be a note then in your financial statements and be addressed.
But at the end of the day, there's the process of tax sale and all that, that also then secures that value too, right?
Right, and write offs would occur.
Yes, that's right. Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Soever. Any other questions to this report from county counselors?
I see nothing, Mr. Warden. I will note that Rob has sent a note to say that we are live. Just happened, so.
Okay, thank you. Just like, just like that. Very good. Well, we were on our best behavior. We know that, so that's fantastic. Welcome for those that are joining us live. Okay, seeing there's no other, we're on item C, FRCW oh eight twenty debt management policy. And again, that was moved by Counselor Carlton and second by Counselor Robinson. Any further discussion on that resolution? Okay, I don't see any indication, any opposed? Hearing none or seeing none, that's carried. Okay, thank you for that. All right, so moving on to the memorandum of settlement. This is under grant and so this is moved by Counselor Mackey, second by Counselor Body. Mr. McLevy, do you have anything to add to this report?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning or afternoon. I'm not sure what it is right now, but thanks for the time. This is a pretty straightforward report. This is negotiations that we've been doing with Unifor, representing employees at Rockwood Terrace. There's not a lot to add other than the the piece where we were mandated with a one point six two percent budget and we've managed to negotiate within the one point six two percent. But I think more importantly is the task force that has been put together for long-term care gave us a few different things that felt that we could do better at scheduling for employees and getting people to be available in long-term care. And we're happy to say that we've managed to get over some of those hurdles. So I think it's a, it's a good news report this time around. And we're trying to follow the same conversations with Lee Manner and Gray Gables coming up later this year.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you for all your work there, Mr. McLevy. And questions from county counselors? Are there any questions?
I see nothing coming up on the chat or any hands raised.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing none, then I'm going to, I'm going to call the question then. Any opposed to this resolution? Hearing or seeing none, that is carried. Okay, moving on to item E, this is a tender award for Gray Road twenty-nine. And this was moved by Counselor Burley. Is Counselor Burley with us, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I think.
Okay.
We understand that he has still some technical difficulties on his end that's impacting his ability to hear. So I'm not sure that he'll be able to respond.
Okay, so maybe I'll look for a different mover. Is there, I have, I have second by Counselor Mackey, but is there a different mover? Would somebody likes to move this report for the construction? Okay, Counselor Desai and second by Counselor Mackey. All right, that's regards to the report. Pat, do you have anything to add to your report?
Yeah, just some very quick thoughts. We feel that this job, we're kind of tackling it as one of our essential jobs that we still tendered, even though with COVID and, you know, our work processes are going to change here. But the window doesn't start until June twenty-second, so we've got some time to work with our contractors on exactly how they're going to maintain social distancing. But one thing that we've heard a lot from OGRA is they want these jobs to go, contractors want the jobs to go. Essential public safety roadwork is, you know, basically approved by the province. So that's kind of where we went ahead and closed this tender and we'll work with our contractor on, you know, probably lighting up on liquidated damages and those types of things. Try to work with the contractor to get our key jobs done this year because we feel if we do this section, we could be in trouble maintaining this through the winter. So that's why we want to go ahead with this endeavor.
Okay, thank you for that, Pat. And your protocols will certainly address the current status of COVID one nineteen for distancing and all that stuff, I presume. And will you, you'll be putting signage up, since this is, if this gets supported today, you'll be putting signage up to let the community know that this is happening?
Yeah, there'll be pre-construction signage that we'll do for the, at the pre-construction meeting. We'll discuss that with the contractor.
Very good, thank you.
Counselor Millen has raised his hand. He has a question.
Okay, welcome, Counselor Millen. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Pat, have you made allowances for staff that may have gone into Walter's Falls and can't find their way out?
They're all still there.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
I'm sure Counselor Millen, if you're driving through, you're probably picking something up for the farm at the mill there, right?
Oh, undoubtedly, if not at the, at the hotel.
Well, maybe. Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions, the county counselors?
I see the chatter, no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And seeing there's no more discussion, any opposed to the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll determine that's carried then. So then, moving on our agenda, we have other business. And we have, the first part is COVID nineteen update and I presume, Madam CEO, you're going to speak to.
I am. Yes, I am. Thanks very much, Mr. Warden. So county council, since my last verbal update on March thirtieth, the province has issued many directives and guidelines that are impacting our operations, particularly in long-term care and paramedic services. Our priority in everything we do remains public safety and the safety of our staff. Over the past month, we've made significant changes to our operations to protect people and to do our part to minimize the spread of the virus. The Gray dot CDA COVID nineteen page is clearly highlighted on the website and holds all of our COVID-related resources for staff and for the public. And all other Gray County websites like Visit Gray and Maiden Gray point back to this one. Our county telephone lines are answered during business hours and two-one-one is available to the public twenty-four seven. In this respect, the county has provided a small amount of additional funding to two-one-one to support additional staff so that they can stay on top of the increased call volume that they're experiencing. Within the Gray County Administration Building, we are operating with a bare minimum of staff. We are keeping up with accounts payable, court administration, planning applications, and a very large volume of requests for support in social services. Jody and the IT team have done a stellar job of getting everyone connected and working effectively from home. I think one thing that we can take away from all of this is that iPads for yourselves are not ideal for remote meetings. And we will include a change back to laptops for consideration in next year's budget. We've also been made aware, and this is for all of you going forward, there are increased security threats circulating out in the world. And everyone is reminded to be extra vigilant when it comes to securing passwords, not accessing links to external sources, et cetera. The province has provided additional funds for our use in responding to COVID nineteen. There's additional funding for long-term care specific to our response, as well as a general one and a half percent funding increase. We're still waiting for a case mix index and some other specifics on this and we anticipate having a report for you to consider in May. I know that many of you are interested in the Social Services Relief Fund that was released by Municipal Affairs and Housing last week. The province announced one hundred and forty-eight million across the province and that Gray's allocation on the Social Services Relief Fund was two point three million. That money is being administered through the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative, or CHIPPI, and is intended to assist the service managers in supporting a range of vulnerable populations, including people living in community housing, supportive housing, low-income social assistance recipient and others who require social services support, as well as those experiencing homelessness. So just a few details around this funding. First of all, it's an allocation over this entire fiscal year, so April two thousand and twenty through to March two thousand and twenty-one. So we need to be conscious of the fact that there will be a recovery phase to these funds as well as the current acute phase. What we've been given notice for is that we'll receive fifty percent of those funds, so one point one five million in April. And then another twenty-five percent in July of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand. The final twenty-five percent would come to us in September if we can provide justification of an ongoing need. Otherwise, those funds will be dispersed to other places with a higher COVID need. We're still in the very early stages and working hard to get an idea of actually how the funds will flow to those most in need. We did provide immediate support to O Share to address the huge demand for meals and as well to Y Housing. and as well to Y Housing. We're reaching out to agencies that provide housing and homelessness services for vulnerable residents to see where they're at and the identified gaps that they have in their service. We're seeing shelter needs for quarantine and self isolation and also the requirement to provide shelter to homeless folks to ensure that they are able to maintain the the required distancing and minimize the spread of infection. We estimate forty to fifty thousand dollars a month over and above our our regular budget just for that emergency housing. Funds will also be needed for isolation services, so if people are in isolation and they need to be brought food or there's enhanced security required for the places where where they're staying. We know that later on in this process, there'll be increased demand for sustainable housing benefit to cover rental arrears. So we're hearing from from the charities and and other groups in your communities. We're asking anyone who reaches out to us that we don't normally work with to complete a short application form so that we are staying on top of all of those requests. And then Anne Marie will bring back a status update to you in May to give you a sense of what we've been able to fund, where we have some questions for council to consider and the things that are maybe outside of the mandate of these funds that you may wish to consider under some other support mechanism. With regard to social services, the province has expanded access to temporary emergency assistance under Ontario Works for those in financial crisis who have no access to other supports. This funding will help cover needs such as food, rent, medicine, transportation, and other services. The temporary assistance will help to bridge many applicants that would be in crisis until the federal benefits are rolled out and received. There's an online application that's being released today and demand is expected to rise in the coming weeks. Currently, we're seeing one emergency assistance application for every three full OW applications. Staff are working through individual circumstances to determine what other sources of income may be available, such as SERB or or EI. The cap that we normally work under for discretionary benefits has been lifted in order to issue emergency benefits for COVID related expenses to our existing OW and ODSP recipients, and that's an emergency a hundred dollars for an individual or two hundred dollars for families. Despite face to face access no longer being an option, staff are reaching out and increasing contact via phone, email, and text to make sure that our clients are supported, informed, and that their needs are met. We are monitoring the trend reports that we get on the kind of calls that are coming to two one one to see where there are gaps in service or unmet needs so that we can help our partners step up in that respect. On the childcare side, you'll recall that the childcare centers were closed by the province and remain closed as the schools are. And there's been no update from the Ministry of Education as to a timeline when this may be lifted. Our priority as Gray County is to ensure that we're retaining these childcare businesses and the workers in the sector so that we have a childcare system when the state of emergency is lifted. The centers have received operating allocation up to the end of the second quarter for twenty twenty and reimbursement for childcare subsidy for the month of March, which is paid in arrears. We're waiting for additional direction from the Ministry of Education to determine what financial supports could be flowed to operators moving forward to assist with that sustainability and staff retention. And we're maintaining a question and answer document for providers as information becomes available and they staff are holding weekly teleconferences with the operators just to check in and ensure that if they have any unanswered questions, we'll get them the information that they need. Our home childcare providers are in a similar circumstance. They those home childcareers are not operating either under the direction of the Medical Officer of Health. We intend to flow money to them similar to what they received in March. Should the provincial direction change regarding the flow of funds, we'll come back to you to counsel for with options to consider. The hope is that if we continue to provide them with funding, they will may remain rostered with Gray County Home Childcare. The home childcare workers are reaching out by phone and email to the individual providers, again, similar to what we're doing with the with the operators. Our special needs resourcing agencies are also moving into this electronic service delivery age that we're in and reaching out to parents and helping and providing help through social media, phone, and email. So we're really hoping that no one being left in in a crisis situation without some kind of support around them. Moving on from there, just to speak to transportation, our winter control season wraps up April fifteenth. And Pat and his team have taken a look at the manpower necessary to complete critical tasks that need to be done before we get to next winter's winter control. We've adjusted activities to complete to be completed by a single person in a piece of equipment or using staggered shifts. So trying to, you know, as Pat just mentioned, trying to get to that social distancing and keeping our staff safe. This does have some impacts on our the efficiency that we can undertake all of our regular tasks with. The net of all of their deliberations is that we won't hire any backup or summer students this summer and we'll just run with our full time complement and the nine seasonal employees. Regarding like, you can appreciate that there's a lot of work that happens in transportation from a maintenance perspective that needs to keep intersections and sightlines safe and just that maintenance of structures and bridges and that we do need to stay on top of that. Regarding the twenty twenty construction, on April first, purchasing advised the public that one released tender, which was the bridge replacement on Gray Road nine, was being canceled. And that some tenders that we had released were being delayed for further until further notice. So that included the tenders for Gray Roads eleven and fifteen, Gray Road two, and a micro surfacing project on another portion of Gray Road two. So the paving projects that are going ahead are Gray Road four in Durham, Gray Road nine in Southgate, Gray Road fifteen in Meaford, Gray Road nineteen in Town of the Blue Mountains, and Gray Road twenty nine through Walters Falls. With that, and then you also have seen from economic development, culture, and tourism, they've been doing some significant outreach and education to assist the small business community. They've developed a lot of resources in just three short weeks, including that community and business resiliency map showing what businesses and services are available. The Economic Development Working Group, which is Savannah's team and then all of the local economic development officers are working together and able to reach out and provide support, advice, and guidance to businesses on a on a very quick turnaround. This group is already thinking about recovery and what needs to happen when restrictions are lifted. I also wanted to give kudos to this group because they are among the first to be trained for redeployment into long term care and there are fifteen of our economic development, culture, and tourism staff who've been trained to support long term care. With regard to paramedic services, things are stable at this time. There's been a huge amount of work put into forward planning to keep the paramedics safe with the appropriate PPE and making sure that we have enough supplies and planning response scenarios should the situation here become more critical and our hospital facilities exceed capacity. The service has been working in partnership with public health, fire, police, hospitals, the community agencies, and the private sector on many aspects of this preparation and response. And I believe that the strength in relationships will be of benefit to us during this recovery period, but certainly beyond that. They've done a great job in coordinating those donations of PPE and that you've heard earlier that that stuff's being stored at Gray Roots and and being taken out to the services that that require it. Similarly, in long term care, there's been a vast amount of work done to safeguard the homes and their and our home staff and prepare them to respond to an outbreak. Jennifer, we were providing a detailed summary to the committee in the meeting that follows this one. I wanted to finally say that there have been questions about staffing and whether or not we should consider layoffs. So I will speak to the staff utilization today, and I know Kevin mentioned it a little bit here. We are looking carefully at our cash flow and as we get a better sense of where we are financially, we'll be bringing that information to council. But specific to the staffing, we look at all of the Gray County staff and we pull out the paramedics and the long term care staff. That leaves us with a complement of two hundred and fifty. And as I've noted in this report, for some of our departments, their workload has actually increased during this crisis response in places like social services and housing and other departments like finance, HR, legal, court admin, planning, and clerks are still needed to provide those critical functions that they always provide. So out of the two hundred and fifty staff that are considered quote unquote non-essential that are there are ninety that are available to be redeployed to other duties, either in long term care, housing custodial, or for future requirements. So far, we've trained twenty eight to work in long term care and there are another thirty scheduled to be retrained next week. At the outset of this crisis, I told staff that we wouldn't want to continue to support them for the time being as long as they were working and willing to be redeployed. If they should refuse a redeployment request and they don't have a medical reason for for that refusal, then the messaging has been delivered that they'll be replaced placed on an unpaid leave of absence or in other words, laid off until the situation resolves. So at this time, I'm not anticipating the need for layoffs. And when I talk to my other county colleagues across the Southwest, that would be a very, I think, a similar tag that most of them are taking. We need these people and we're going to have a tremendous amount of work for them to undertake during their recovery phase and as we try to, you know, deal with a backlog of of work that's, you know, kind of accruing right now. There are some counties that do offer library services or some of those things, recreational services. And sometimes those staff are treated differently, but that's not the place that we're in 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 Gray County at this time. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's kind of the the Coles Notes version of where we are right now.
Well, thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam CEO, for that lengthy report and very much very in depth. And I want to take this time to thank you on behalf of County Council for all the work that you're doing and staff. You know what? You guys are doing an amazing job and I just wanted to let you know that we're quite proud of the work that you're doing. Are you able to send that out to all county councilors? Because there was quite a bit of information in that, Madam CEO.
Yes, I would have sent it earlier if I could have got it done earlier. So I will I will send it out to all of you this afternoon, absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you again for all your hard work. And I think I saw Counselor Desai indicated that he had a question. Counselor Desai, you there?
Yes, yes, Mr. Warden. Thank you. I guess if if we're going if we're going to get the report in the afternoon, I'll look it up in there, but I just wanted to ask with regards to the CHIPPEE funding, if that could be accessed by food banks, because we do have a couple of food banks in our in our municipality that have been asking for funds or and they've one of them had a volunteer specifically contact me and and refer to the provincial funding that was supposed to flow through the municipal service managers. So my question is whether the CHIPPEE funding can be used accessed by food banks and to how if they can, how can they access it? Thank you.
Anne Marie, if you're on the line, do you want to just speak to the specific, you know, getting an application for Josh and and that? Oh, maybe she's got troubles. Okay, there is there's an application, as I mentioned in the report, that we've asked that people complete and then we'll be looking at at all of those and and trying to, you know, put some priority around them and and making sure that you've got the the right things covered off. So maybe what I'll do when I send out this report, I'll also include the application form with you. And then if you're asked directly, then you can at least have that document to be able to provide to someone and and with the instructions of how to get it back in here. Would that work?
That would be perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That, Counselor Desai, is there any other questions to the report that Kim made? That anybody on your chat there, Madam Clerk?
I see nothing, Mr. Warden.
I just have a few things to discuss here, just bring up to date. As your warden, as you're quite aware, we declared, I think it was March twenty sixth, and I see all the lower tier municipalities had either declared before or after that. Just there's this one sort of housekeeping that was sent out and I saw a few responses that is this is a different type of an emergency situation than most. If we need to call on all one representative from all the lower tiers, please get that into our clerk's department or whatever, just in case. It's only something really elevated and I know in speaking to Barb Pompiser a few weeks back, she had raised that and and certainly want to want to make sure that if if there is an elevated situation that we have a representative from each municipality sitting at that table if if the need arises to that point. As your warden, I'm quite busy with regards to speaking on behalf of County Council through either a commercial on Spotify, which Rob sort of got me set up for, and part of that is all about washing their hands and certainly in a number of different town hall meetings with Bruce Power. And we get our kudos to Bruce Power for the all the, you know, efforts that they're doing, their continued, you know, they are a great corporate citizen in our area and we're so lucky to have them in our area for what they're doing. Again, a big shout out to Dr. Era, who is, you know, part of the Medical Officer of Health for Gray Bruce Health Services. And again, he's a great source, reliable resource and, you know, as he says, that people are concerned, but people aren't scared. And and for him, his leadership is has certainly proven very strong for this during this situation. I certainly have been in lots of meetings with your local MP, MPP, certainly Lisa Thompson sets up a town hall session once or twice a week, so I'm certainly plugged in on on regional issues along with our Cao. Again, I want to thank our Cao and staff for all the hard work that they're doing to get through this and we will get through this. It just, we have to bunker down and be safe as as Dr. Era says, it's it's coming and we have to be prepared for that and we are as a community and that's a big part of what we are as a strong community and and we work through that. Again, this is the Easter weekend coming up, so I know there's 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 we're being reminded that certainly communicate with your family through electronic means, but again, we have to keep the physical or the the social distancing there and 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 we have to stay put and it's 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 about saving lives. That's, you know, a big part of what we have to do and 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 we bring that again as as Dr. Era says, continue, continue to wash your hands, wash your hands. He said his mother taught him how to do that and that's what he remembers and I'm sure we've all heard that from Dr. Era and it's it's very important. So I don't know if you have any questions to me. But certainly I'm available anytime those that wish to reach out for me. And certainly if you have concerns in your community, I know every day through probably your own EOC meetings or us at the county, you know, certain things arise and and, you know, we're getting updates all the time, both from federal or provincial. And I know that the the essential business list got changed there on Friday, so it continues that and and our Cao and other staff keep us informed and 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 that's great. So at that point, I'll I'll leave it at that. Stay safe. And I don't know if there's any questions or comments from other county councilors. Any comments? I know you're you're having your own EOC meetings that are keeping yourself in the loop too and and that sort of thing. So anything more from you, Kim or staff?
I think one one thing that last Friday, Dr. Era sent something out about whether consideration should be given to some sort of a centralized tip line or place to receive these complaints under the emergency orders about people gathering and non-essential businesses and that sort of thing. So I had some preliminary discussions with your CAOs. It's just that the police and the health unit are feeling, I think, quite overloaded with handling this and we're looking for someone else to take some of the weight off of their shoulders. So I will continue to work with your folks to see if there's a way forward that that we could provide some support to the to those people acting kind of as a central spot, but we're still trying to work through those details. There's one more thing on the agenda as well, I think, from Kevin.
Yes, I will get to that. If there's no other comments with regards to COVID nineteen. I know that this is a Easter weekend, and there is concern of people moving around, and I think as Dr. Era's head is, you know, tried to, you know, refrain from non-essential, uh, travel, and I know that, uh, with the announcement that came out on Friday that, uh, even, you know, short-term accommodations are, are not allowed unless it's in a, uh, emergency with relationship to COVID-19. So, seeing there's no other, uh, comments out there, uh, I'm going to move over to, uh, Kevin, uh, with regards to the June tax installments from lower tiers, Kevin?
Thank you, Warden. Um, yeah, just, I did, uh, surveyed the treasures and, and got their comments about what each local municipality was doing to provide tax relief for, with, with this emergency, it's, it's ongoing. So, many have deferred their next interim payment, or they waive penalties and interest, and, um, but also to that, a number of them are asking, with, could the county provide some relief on the June payment, uh, to the counties, the second installment of, of the, the county's installment, similar to what the, uh, education tax, what the province has done with education, moving that, uh, deferring it to, to September. The municipal acts wrote a little different when it comes to the county and, and the, and that upper-level tier, uh, commitment, but, um, my intention is with tax policy, it's still, I'm working towards that to provide that that payment for those that can't make that payment would be interest-free for those 90 days, and then in essence, wouldn't be, wouldn't be required until September. Yeah, so it's a little easier way to handle it through the bylaws, and, and, but that's, uh, we're working through now, and working through our cash flows. Um, I maybe have to call in some of our investments that are, like, that are coming due, but, uh, I believe that the county can do this, and, uh, but in the same sense, we'll, you know, we'd show that being due that in June, and, because some municipalities said they'd be able to cash off some of that to the county that they had collected, so that's kind of where I'm going. Those that are really needing it, that there would, would be no pose of any penalty, and I would give them relief to September. So, that's how I'm moving forward with this, okay?
So is that like September 1st, or, or?
September 30th.
30th, okay, and you're communicating that to all the treasures, like you said, right?
Yeah, that's what I said, I was, we're, we're gonna, so, I, my first survey was what each of them were doing, and, and, and all of them were able to do their March installment to the county, so that, that's come and, and stuff, and then it was just discussion what they were going to do forward, and, and then, and a number of them mentioned about, could the county do something similar to what the province did with the education taxes that were due at the end of June, so.
Right. I think the important part here is, and it's great that you're offering that, is you're deferring it, but it's still due.
Yeah, yeah.
You're just, you're just deferring it, right?
Well, hopefully, we're, we're back to some normalcy, but, uh, yeah, it's stepping times, right?
Okay, any question from county councillors with regards to Kevin's verbal report? Anything, Madam Clerk?
Nothing, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, seeing there's no other discussion there, uh, are there any notice of motions for upcoming, uh, meetings? Any notice of motions? Okay, I see none. Uh, well, we're at that time of the day where I have an adjournment. Uh, moved by councillor Millen and second by councillor Leary. At this time, we will adjourn at 12:30, all, is there any opposed? What was that? Okay, that's carried, well, very good.